I called this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held Tuesday, May 14th, 2024, commencing at 7:00 P. M. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Salahudin, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Nueva Camina, and myself, Council President Kritzler. I'll announce other council members as they arrive. Councilmember Fields will not be in attendance tonight. There are two items on our agenda: Fire Department EMS Transport Fee Program and Council Talk Time. The first item on the agenda is the Fire Department EMS Transport Fee Program. Adrian Shepherd, our Fire Chief, will introduce this item. Chief Shepherd.
Yes, thank you, and good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be before you. What we want to do tonight is come before you again and speak to you on the EMS transport fees. This is a change to what we have historically done in the fire service. My complement this evening is Deputy Chief Mike De Spain. He will have a run of order here on the presentation, and I believe he is ready, though he is shifting through papers, and I will transfer it over to him.
Yes, thank you. There we go. Helps to turn it on. Okay, so again, thank you for our opportunity to present today. So we presented this at the Committee of the Whole, so this is just a little bit deeper, and we did bring in some questions from council into this presentation. So I'll expand this presentation a little bit as we go through it, and so feel free to stop me if you have any questions. But the kind of the premise of this is that ambulance providers all over the United States charge for emergency medical transport, ambulance transport. And so what's unique about our county, and particularly Redmond, is that we use a little bit of an EMS levy to offset that at the front end, and so we have not billed traditionally. But over time, because the levies don't keep up, they're starting to use alternative funding to kind of supplement that. And so we're one of the last agencies, we're not actually going to be the last, but we're one of the last agencies to not have a program like this, so we're trying to just use those best practices as we kind of bring it in. So as we look at the options that we're talking here, we're trying to work through kind of the best practices, and what we're looking at is trying to use well-established state and federal funding sources to help close that public safety gap that we talk about that impacts the local taxpayers, and then also ensure sustainability of our EMS program, maintain service levels over time, because we see population growth increases, calls for service. So the rising demand for service is going to create a little bit more extra demand on the system. And then we also want to make sure that whatever we implement aligns with the agencies around us, so that if you were in Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, it's all kind of the same, same system, if you will. So we kind of gave this view of the different types of billing, the direction you can go in billing, and it's kind of from the most aggressive down to the least aggressive. So down at the bottom is the least aggressive, there's just no billing, and that's where we are. The most aggressive is they'll bill all the pieces possible, and then whatever's left over, they'll bill the patient for the rest, and if the patient doesn't pay, or the estate doesn't pay, then they'll go after collections, and they'll go to collections. So that's the most aggressive, and that's probably 80% of the United States, that's the system. If you go to the hospital, that's how the hospital works. If you go to a doctor, that's how the doctor works. Dentist, wherever you want to say, that's, that's medical care in the United States. We're pulling ours back a little bit to kind of align with our unique system and also align with the other fire-based EMS programs, and that is just, we would basically bill insurance, so Medicaid, Medicare, it could be Labor and Industries, which is what we call LNI, and we take whatever they give, and then we're done. So we don't charge the, the community for anything. Although we, one thing we can be a little bit different is if it's a resident of Redmond, that's how we would treat it, they would get no bill. If we transported someone that was outside the area, you know, driving through on 520, they got in an accident, then we could go to bill the patient and try and get some money from the patient, so balance bill, that makes sense, the piece that's missing, they're not paying the levy, so we could go after that. Now, whether we go to collections or not, that's, the best way to say that is we wrote a financial hardship policy that council would have to approve before we do anything. That's pretty forgiving with write-off, so that we, and our goal is not to get us the last dime out of customers, it's really provide the best service we can, make sure it's sustainable, and then not overburden our local taxpayers, especially when you're providing service to people outside the area. So that's why this is what we think is the best balance and is in alignment with the local EMS providers that are doing transport surrounding us, so Bellevue, Kirkland, Duval, Bothell, those agencies. So there's really two sides of this. One of them is, there's all the insurance that we've talked about, but Medicaid, we have to pull out just a little bit separate and understand, if we do approve this, we're actually doing two programs. We're, we're doing one that does Medicare, one that does private insurance, one that does LNI, one that does private pay, all of those, and then there's one separate, we have to pull Medicaid out just a little bit different. The nice thing about Washington State is has one of the better Medicaid programs in terms of what we're trying to do, so you'll hear us use this word, ground emergency medical transport, GMT. So we bill everything under one umbrella, except for anyone that's on Medicaid, and then that goes under a different path, same, we're still billing it all, kind of works the same. It's just that instead of billing the federal government, this goes through the state, and the state helps recoup that, and they do, they draw the funds down from the federal government. Whereas we would get normal funds, like every month, we would draw funds from collections, this one's once a year. So you'd get like this piece of the money every month, but then you get this one kind of dump at the end of the year based on Medicaid. And one important thing to remember is that if someone doesn't have insurance and they qualify, when they go into the hospital, the moment they walk in the hospital, they get enrolled in Medicaid if they meet Medicare or Medicaid, and we're a Medicaid expansion state, so that's not too many people that don't meet that. So the majority of people have insurance, and I don't have the exact payer profile for us, because we haven't billed enough, so we have to kind of guess what the other agencies are, but it's probably 97% to 99% of everybody has insurance. So when we talk about private pay, which is the one off, it's maybe like the 1%. So this just gives us a quick look at neighboring jurisdictions. This is about what they charge. For us to bill Medicare and Medicaid, we have to do a fee study every year, so we can't just make up a fee, we have to do is base it on analysis, and then we have to go to council, and you would have to approve that every single year if you adjust it up or down. You don't have to charge exactly what the fee study says, the fee study just gives you the maximum speed limit, you couldn't charge over it, and that's to comply with Medicare and Medicaid rules. We believe that our rates would come in probably very close to Bellevue and Kirkland, although there's some agencies that are close by that charge much higher, but that's because they have less transports. Their standby costs are about the same, but they have less transports to grind through, so they have to make more money on the transport. And the transport is really the cost to transport the patient to the hospital, so there's, there's, soon as you take them, it doesn't matter how far you take them, it's the charge, and then there's a mileage fee, and then that dictates on how far you're taking them. Just doing some rough math on here, we have the neighboring jurisdictions, we just did some rough math where we combined what we think our rate might be, and we came up with about, a blended rate of about $985. And then just assuming about 1,000 transports, well, we're doing $895, and then the money that would be about a five-mile transport is what we're estimating. So that means each bill would be about $995. We do about 1,100 transports per year, that's in the city. We do more than that, but some of those are with District 34, which we contract for service, and they are not wanting to join the program yet, but they want to see, they can't do it until you do it, so they're, they're watching. So I, I suspect they may, but right now, we're doing all the math as if they aren't. So our 1,100 transports specific to the, the city, that would bring in of a grow, we would bill out about $1 million. The collection rate right now is about 90%, and so that brings it down a little bit. And then with that $985,000, there's some costs that we have to put into it, so we'll need one FTE to help administer the program, and it's really the daily billing, so they have to go through every one of those 1,000 transports as they come through, and make sure they're correct before we submit it to the billing company. And then we have to do a fee study every single year, that's about $30,000, cost reports for GMT. So all in all, our, our kind of conservative number is about $788,000, using 2023 numbers is about where that would come in in terms of net extra money to supplement the program. We do have a number of arguments that are in favor of that, and some that are con, and then as a good example is if we use that $788 as kind of example, that is additional revenue, and kind of the way to look at it is, every place else in the United States, there's Medicare, Medicaid insurance, and they're setting rates based on the fact that they're going to pay for an ambulance transport. But we don't charge them, so they're making a nice profit, and that's good for the private medical insurance. Federal government, I don't know that they even care, because it's, it's, it's a drop in the bucket, but at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is say, that is additional revenue, that takes the edge off the levy in terms of how much we try and recoup or maintain level of service. So what this means is when we try and replace equipment, aid cars and those kind of things, it's a much easier question, because from a budget standpoint, there's an allocated amount that has to set an account accountable to the EMS program, so drawing from those funds becomes a little bit easier for the city to deal with. And then we are one of the last departments in King County that does not charge, there's two or three others, and many of those are doing what we're doing, they're looking towards that program. This brings us into kind of alignment with the region, and remember, we do have a lot of mutual aid back and forth, so in a good example is Bellevue has a program, they've been billing for years, but if they come into Redmond, they don't bill because they're trying to honor our rules, but they're subsidizing our business model when they do that. If we align with them, then we can, we can transport and charge on their side, they can treat and transport and charge on our side, following our rules, so it's the same rules, it's invisible to the community, but what that does is help them improve their revenue stream and less subsidy, subsidy to our business model and vice versa. And so the cons, these are just ones that we were kind of thinking through, so there could be the argument that they're already paying a portion of the service through the property tax and levy, and even though that's true, what happens is they're really subsidizing the state and federal government and the, the private medical insurance, because we're not billing and we could, that's really kind of the better way to say it. And then the amount of money we levy, or how often we update the levy, is what, is what's negotiable once we have this additional funds coming in. And then some questions about whether they have co-pay with their insurance and, you know, that out-of-pocket expense. What happens is when, so when someone gets transported, if you kind of think of it this way, we're going to, the, the billing company is going to get the information, they're going to send the insurance company a bill, and let's say, just for round numbers, let's say it's $1,000, the insurance company is going to say, we'll pay 80% of that, so they're going to give us a check for $800, and they're going to say, it's up to you to go get the rest from the patient. Well, we'll use our flow chart, which I'll refer to in a minute, and we'll say, oh, it's, it's a resident of Redmond, there's no bill, we just write it off, there is no co-pay. If, depends on how we write the policy, if it's out of network, if they're out of Redmond resident, then we can charge, we can balance bill the patient, so we would send a bill to the patient saying that you owe the $200 that are left over. And then if they don't pay, then that's a decision on how far we go based on our policy. If they say, I can't pay because of financial need, then we have a way to either diminish that considerably or write it completely off, and most of the communities around us have very forgiving write-off policies, so. And then included in your packet is the, the BLS transport, and I apologize, I don't have it on this piece right here, but there is the BLS transport flow chart, and it should look like this. So I'll just walk you through this real quick, so you can kind of see it in flowchart mode, but there are a couple exceptions to when we bill. So the first one is, if the call is in Redmond, then we'll go down the flowchart. If not, we can't necessarily bill unless we have an agreement with the other agency. So just like I said, Bellevue, Kirkland, if we all agree, then if we're outside of Redmond, we could still bill, but it has to be within their jurisdiction they allow and within their rules, but for today's sake, to keep it simple, the call's in the city of Redmond, so we go to the call, and we're sending a basic life BLS transport vehicle, so that's the aid car, we use the term aid car. Let's say that we get there, and it's something serious, it's a cardiac event, it's a traumatic event, whatever, and they call for Medic One, so they call for a medic unit, then there's no charge, this doesn't even go through the cycle of billing, because it's now transported by Medic One, and that's covered a different way, and so this, it's exempt from this discussion, so there's no bill for anybody, doesn't matter if they're resident or not. So let's say that there is no Medic One transport, it's just BLS, and so then we look at it as if they're a resident, then they go down one path, if not, they would, they could go down the other. The easiest way to look at, if you, if you look at this, is if they're a resident, there's the two boxes on the left and the three boxes in the middle, we follow that one, if they're not, then we always follow the three boxes in the middle, but we could follow the two boxes on the right. So really, the difference between being a resident and not a resident only deals with if you're private pay or you have private insurance, it's, that's really the only difference. Everybody else gets bills through Medicare, Medicaid, or LNI, and there is no balanced billing, so it's against the law to send the bill to the patient. You get what the government gives you, and you got to take it, and that's, that's all that you get. Now, with our fee study and GMT, they will cover about 50% of our unfunded costs, so it's, it, it's not 100%, but it's, it's pretty close, and so we'd be happy with that. So when you look at this, everything in the middle is the same for everybody, we accept whatever payment we get, and we can't charge the patient. It really just gets over to when it's not a, a resident, then it's like, what do you want us to do with that? Our recommendation is let us bill and try and get some money from the patient, and if they don't pay or can't pay, then we go down that financial hardship, which is down on the right-hand side, so. Any questions on the flowchart?
Any questions, councilmembers? All right, continue on, thanks.
Okay. And then just to finish out with the presentation, make sure I got it here. So really, what we're looking for and, and for the next steps is, we eventually want to get to the point where we're able to adopt a BLS transport program, and the initial fee structure and then the billing methodology, so that's where we're looking for permission to keep moving down that road. We actually can't bring it to council right this minute to adopt, because we don't have the fee study done, and we can't do anything without the fee study. So it's in progress, we have a vendor on contract now, which is doing that process for us, but remember, that'll set the maximum rate, and then council can adjust where they think that needs to be, and then if so, then there's a couple of things we need to do, adjust the municipal code to allow us to do it, set the first rate. We have some sample language already ready to go through that, and some of the policies we've already sent to the city's attorney's office, just to look for, to make sure before it comes to council that it's correct. But then the last piece would be the, what date do you start? And then some of the policy piece is just the write-off policy, and make sure council has a chance to look through that. So that's the end of the presentation, if you've got questions or things that we've missed that you want to cover.
Thank you. And just to clarify, in our packet, in the memo, it did note that it was seeking approval at the 521 business meeting, but based on what you said, we'll be seeing it a little bit later, once we get more details, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we're still seeking, and Chief, correct me, that we're still seeking approval to move forward, to invest money, time, start looking at what would be the proper FTE position, what would be a possible implementation date, but we, the, the municipal code that we bring to you will say, when, when we say that we're approved to do it, we'll actually say, you're going to start the program, and you have to set the first rate, so it looks interesting that that rate will sit in your municipal code for, forever, at whatever rate it was in 2024, 2025, whenever you take effect, and even though you'll update it, it just, it sits in the code that it was established on that date at that rate. So again, until we finish the fee study, we can't do anything formally to start it, but we can say, look for council's direction on, are we heading the right direction, and what are we missing, what, what concerns would council have that we can address in the meantime?
Great. So we can give you direction tonight, but we wouldn't take a vote until later, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so councilmembers, we'll open to questions and also ask you to share if you're, you're good with, given the direction to continue on. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I'm, I am in favor with moving forward with this, and I really truly appreciate the care in which you guys took in looking at this, to find an approach that benefited the city and also benefited the residents who live here, and, and the hardship policy and all of that. As someone who has recently had to deal with two of these instances and out of state, I've actually looked into these policies, and the relief that came over our family when we realized that there was no bill, because that person was a, a resident of that city, was huge. So I really applaud you for looking into that, for moving forward in that direction. I do have a couple of questions on, we, we have a lot more community members who are doing remote work and insurance companies that are not the commonplace insurances within our state, so how will we navigate those insurance companies? How will we navigate if it's a new insurance company that we haven't dealt with before? And then really interested to see that hardship policy, I'm curious if we can see that before the fee study.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the fee, I believe that the hardship policy would come when we present the fee study, because you'll want to see what the fees are and when you want to reduce them or increase them.
That makes sense.
What, what would be the, and there's a poverty level they calculate for when you reduce it. But to answer your question about a, let's say, an insurance company from out of state, the, the reality is, when they have insurance and we bill the insurance, the insurance is required to address the, the fee, so we don't have to have a pre-arrange with them anymore, that's, that's how it was till just a few years ago.
Okay.
You can write contracts specific to the insurance, but based on the recommendations I got from the billing company we work with, which does 95% of the state of Washington, said, recommend that we not do that, just because our, our bills are not that high, we are going to be actually about half of what kind of the national average is, so it sets under the radar for them, and that way, we don't have to worry about, are they in contract or out of contract, we just send the bill, they'll, they'll, we'll, we'll get what we get from the insurance company, and the customer doesn't balance, we don't balance bill the customer, so they'll, it's not that they won't know, but it won't impact them.
Got it. And then what budget bucket will this money go toward?
So we have an existing EMS fund that levy money sets in, and that's what we use to draw off to support the, the program. Especially any of the federal money that comes in has to go back into that account, because what happens is the next year, they'll do the fee study, and they'll say, how much money did you bring in, how much did you spend, and they'll, you'll set your rate based on what are you, what, what's the gap, and so again, they're trying to maintain that.
Got it.
Mayor Bernie?
And just to follow up, so this will supplant other money that we can put back into the general fund, so we'll free up that money for other things.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Salahudin?
Thank you, and really appreciate the presentation. I echo Council Vice President Forsyth in that I'm really looking forward to, to seeing this. The establishing, establishment of alignment with neighboring jurisdictions is particularly exciting, especially as we're seeing, you know, a lot of the inter-agency operations, you know, coalescing, and then the, the line, residents will receive no bill, is, is great. Two quick questions around that neighboring jurisdiction fee assessment. First one was, do you know when Bellevue and Kirkland implemented their structures?
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe they were more than 10, 15 years ago, so they're, they're pretty dated.
Got it. And then as a follow-up, is there a reason we haven't done it until bringing it today or now?
That would, that, that's above my pay grades.
Yeah.
Discussion.
Yeah, there's no solid answer to that, other than we've got visibility of it, and we knew that this was something that was necessary to continue, and it was an offset for other expenses, so, yeah, we're addressing it now.
Great, well, I'm glad we are. And then one more, one final question, looking at, you know, the rate that is recommended for Redmond, 895 plus, I believe it's $20 per mile, as a blend of Bellevue's 950 plus $15 per mile, and Kirkland's 876 plus $20 per mile, how did we get to the exact values? And, and wondering that calculation?
So the values from Bellevue and Kirkland and some of the other agents we looked at, those are exact rates, and they update them every year, so it's public record, so that piece is easy. When we use the 980, the 895 as a blended rate, that's just an estimate of where I think we will land. The fee study is in place, they'll give us the actual fee, but, but to be clear, the actual fee might be $1,200, or it, it's the speed limit as high as you want. Council has the right to adjust that to, you can't go higher than it, but you can go lower in it. And so we just say, if that's about what Bellevue and Kirkland, it just seems reasonable that's about where we'll land, but that's, that's a guess right now. We're, we're confident, it's pretty close, but we won't know until the people that are, do this for a living, and they do the cost reports for the federal government all the time, they would tell us where that sits.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the estimate, just seeing it upfront and then waiting to see that cost report, thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. I love the, the good neighbor policy and making sure that relationships are, continue to be built and, and fortified, that's beautiful. I love the, the managing funds and the, you know, looking at what are our income streams, are we leaving any money on the table, making sure that we're not doing that, I think that's just beautiful stewardship. I specifically, or particularly rather, appreciate how we're looking out for our residents as well as those passing through and taking a look at what, what are our write-off policies and incorporating that, because we hear so many times in the headlines how families that have been striving to get out of poverty are only setback because of this one unexpected trip to the ER. So I love that, that we're thinking about that. One of the things that was brought up was around a line of poverty, a poverty line. In King County, of course, we, we're a little bit different here, so what counts as poverty? So my question is, what poverty line are we using? Are we going to be using something that is local, or are we going to be using a federal? Because that's a significant delta.
Yeah, the, the federal level that we would present as first look is the ones established by the federal government, but council can certainly adjust that however they want to, as long as you don't charge more than what the cost report, the cost, the fee study suggests, you can go as low as you want. So if you say, we want to be 50% of the federal poverty level, or 75%, you know, lower than that or higher, the council can do that. Kirkland and Bellevue's look like they've just used the federal one as kind of a guideline, but, and they would have to come present what their criteria is, but they have a very liberal write-off policy, and so in, in short, I don't know that they've ever sent anyone to collections, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. For me, it's important to kind of go back and echo maybe something that Mayor Bernie brought up. For the listening public who, who may be hearing this conversation, I am supportive, I should say, for us to continue to work on this, and I look forward to the, the public's feedback, especially as we get the results of the fee study. I think it's important to balance and to address maybe, to your, to your question, Councilmember Salahudin, you know, why, I, I can't speak to the why we haven't before, but I do know it's been a point of pride for this body in the past, that residents of Redmond were not charged when they, when they took a trip in one of our ambulances. So for us here, we're balancing, and I, I think it's important for the public to know, we're balancing both that pride and a practice that we've had for a long time here in our city, as well as the need to balance our budget, and our levy led lift did not pass. Council last saw a forecast for our general fund in February of this year, which predicts that in a couple of years, we'll be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of a $15 million gap in our general fund, that we are actively looking for solutions towards. Maybe this will be the answer toward 1 million of those dollars eventually coming back, so I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of, of that balance that we're in. My question for you, Deputy Chief, is around communication as part of the solution here, so this is something that our council's been talking about a lot on a variety of issues, and so even though a bill would never And so, even though a bill would never come to a resident, just like it does today, still there would be a change, and you might see statement like insurance things, and word just might get out in community that there's been a change. We would want to make sure that that change is communicated correctly to residents. How would you go about thinking about how to communicate this change to residents?
We put together a document called EMS Fee Study, or EMS Transport Fee Frequently Asked Questions, and we, I think we finished that up today, so that we have something available to kind of put on the website, so people can kind of look at it. It describes much of what we talked about today in the same kind of question and answer format. But if it's okay, can I offset to the fire chief or to my others about the outreach? Because that's where, that's not my expertise, so how we would do outreach.
And it may be a question we come back to when you bring back the rest of the package. I guess my point being that I would want to make sure that we're not, we are communicating that there is a change, and here's the impact of that change, which is, you will have the same experience that you've always had here in the city of Redmond, but you shouldn't neglect to call 911 when you need to because you think a change has occurred and you might get a bill. I just want us to be proactive about that message.
Absolutely. And I'm more than happy to come back on that, but to your point, we don't want there to be any loss of confidence or fidelity in the EMS system. And so, we are leaning forward on this in the way of communication, as indicated. We do have a frequently asked questions page, and so, it answers a lot of that, but it does, I don't know if we're going to be able to answer everything, and some, that requires that we're actually out in the public, actually communicating with people. So, we're going to be doing that as well. Rumor has it that we have a newly opened senior center, which is a good location for us to actually be out messaging and make more than certain that people who are in need of these services are not afraid to actually use these services. And if there is going to be a change, that is actually a positive change, not a negative change, and we want to communicate that. We do have more information on it, as you indicate, we can just come back later, but more than happy to answer any other questions you may have on this.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, and I, I'll just, one last plug for, I think I referenced this the last time we met with the directors, but we know from that statistically valid community-wide survey that we do on a regular cadence, that folks love hearing from their government through the print newsletter. So, I would say, again, it would just be tragic if someone didn't call 911 because they thought they might get a bill. So, for us to stay ahead of the message in whatever the ways that work for our city, and I know that the executive office will be, you know, a great partner in that too. So, thank you. Appreciate this work.
Great questions from my colleagues. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Yeah, just following up on that, same thought. This would be a great topic for us when we go to National Night Out, to make sure that we're communicating with our neighbors at those neighborhood parties about the potential change. It's coming. We may not know when yet, but that nothing will change within their service.
Great. I'm not seeing other hands. I'll just weigh in to say, you all asked most of my questions and made, I agree heartily with many of the comments, and I think especially this last piece about communication. I mean, it does seem, first of all, we'll just say, thank you for investigating this and really looking at places where we're not accessing funding that could be coming from the federal government, from the state, from the insurance companies that would, you know, make our residents pay, but would be providing some of that needed support for the services that we're providing. So, I think it's great to be able to look at that as part of filling our budget gaps. And, yeah, top lines for our residents to know that they won't have to pay, but that they may see some insurance paperwork, I think is helpful. Yes, go ahead.
So is my mic on. So, Deputy Chief Ami Quirconey, and I just wanted to kind of highlight a couple of specific examples worth communications, because I think that's what, like, obviously, we know we need to communicate, but how we might do that. For one, we have a public education coordinator role in the fire department. That's a new position that began at the beginning of the year. This is on the table for them. So, you mentioned a couple of specific events. Those are the great opportunities for us to get out and do that. Even though we get out in the public and we tell everybody that this is coming, it means nothing to them until they get that first bill. So, the next thing would be is to have inserts in those bills that help illuminate and communicate further, so that it doesn't just say, this is not a bill, but then here's, hey, this is the program that we have, and this is how this may impact you, and maybe even provide, you know, additional questions and Q and A. Because again, we can saturate newsletters out there, and you don't listen to any of it until you have to get in there, and then you're like, what's going on at that point? So, I would say that those would just be a couple of the key things, and of course, we've already proactively put the FAQs up. We know that this is now out in the public and that the questions may come in. And I think what will be really beneficial is, if we start getting inquiries from the FAQs, we'll start to identify our population that's most concerned about the issues, and then that will actually give us the places that we're going to need to target our communication. What groups do we need to go visit? Are they helping us identify other people that maybe we didn't know have some worries about this? And then, we can go back out into the community with them and speak to them directly where they're at. Senior center, Kiwanis meetings, you know, any other places like that.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments on this? Mayor Bernie?
I was just, excuse me, wanted to clarify a few of the process that may come up. So, it, this should be covered by inter-local agreements we already have with other jurisdictions, so there shouldn't be, as you see this coming forward, there won't be another separate ILA or anything like that, inter-local. It'll just be part of that. And then, also, it was mentioned that we will be adding an FTE to man, to help manage the accounting of this program, and so, that will also be part of, as this moves forward, that you could see that as well. And approval of another FTE paid for by these, eventually by these monies, but most likely through one-time money to begin with. So, just kind of helping you understand what the process could look like as hopefully we see this moving forward. And I also would just want to thank the staff for doing this work on this. I had many of the concerns as Council Vice President Forsyth. This has come up over the years, as I've been part of the city, and understanding the opportunity to alleviate some of our general fund burden with money coming through either via insurance or the federal government funding or state funding is quite appealing when we're seeing some budget limitations, as Councilmember Stewart mentioned. And so, I feel like this is a good alternative to some of the challenges we're facing, and it is not intended to overburden, overburden any of our vulnerable community population, nor add debt to anyone, and definitely want people still to call 911 when they need it. And so, we will do everything we can to ensure people don't have concerns about that, to call 911.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the conversation, everyone. I will ask the council members, is there any concern in the staff moving forward to the fee study and bringing this back to us for a future approval? Not seeing any here. So, I think you have your direction to go follow up on this. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the pleasure of your time.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on to the last item on our agenda. Councilmember Salahuddin?
Can we start the?
Oh, you have an item on the first council. Oh, great.
While our fire team is still here.
Oh, okay. While the team's still here.
Yeah, before they rush.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the Spring Safety Fair is this weekend, and it's at the Fire Station 11. And a plug for the Spring Safety Fair, Chief. And Fire Station 11, it's free to, free to attend, and there's a live fire sprinkler demonstration, community CPR demonstrations, police and fire vehicles, arts and crafts, and an ambassador award presentation. So, council has been invited. Deidre has sent it out on our calendars. It's from 10 to 1:00, and I'll be there around noon, and I'm looking forward to it. So, I encourage council to attend as well.
Thank you so much. And the item we're on now is council talk time. I will open it up just in case Chief Shepherd or Deputy Chief De Spain wants to share any other details about the safety fair coming up.
Yeah, I don't know if I have a greater detail, other than just to extend the invitation even more so. We're looking forward to this being well-attended. We hope to see your faces there as well. We're really excited about what our fire prevention team is doing and making sure that our community remains safe. So, this is the beginning of what we're going to expand even further as far as programs that we deliver to our community. So, thank you.
I will note that last year, when I went to this fair, Mayor Bernie and I got to go up in the ladder truck and look all up above the city with some of our firefighters, which was pretty cool. So, council members, just throwing that out there, if you want to come. I don't know if that's for sure, but it was, it was pretty great. And great to just see the community out there. I do encourage everyone to come. It's got a lot of great activities, both for kids and for everyone to be able to learn about public safety. So, thank you so much. All right. We'll move on to other items on council talk time. I wanted to give just a couple of updates. One is, I wanted to follow up on our council retreat. We had a council retreat at the end of April, along with our mayor and directors and our facilitator, Anita Page, who has been working with our city on our respect, equity, diversity, and inclusion and anti-racism work. And we did a deep dive with the directors and the mayor on the work that they've been doing on that plan with Anita, and the council was able to weigh in on some of the key aspects of that. And wanted to update everyone on council, as well as the public, that the next step of that, after we've now kind of had this, this retreat brainstorm, is for us, we'll be seeing that coming to us at a future public meeting, where we'll be studying it, probably a study session, and be looking at the final plan as it's developed, as they've taken some of the feedback from council members into account. And I think council leadership will probably be looking at that plan with Anita, just to make sure that all the feedback that was given is in there. I think there was some discussion in particular about, you know, some of the places where we may actually call out council roles and responsibilities within there, so that it's really clear within the plan what the council will do in each of those aspects. So, hopefully, we'll, we'll try to get it as close to the mark as possible from the feedback that everyone provided, but then we'll have the chance to be able to study that and refine it in open session, and then hopefully, adopt it so that we can move forward as a city on this really important work. But just want to say thanks to everyone who participated in that. I think it was really great discussion. We also followed up as part of that retreat with a great conversation with the mayor about, you know, how we can strengthen our work together between council and the mayor to be able to lead the city together. We had a couple of really good takeaways on that discussion. I think in particular, and I'm trying to pull up my notes here, you know, I think what some of the things that we talked about was, you know, the council's real interest in being able to have kind of a regular flow of communication with the mayor, and we heard back from our mayor that, you know, she can commit to making sure to give each of us a call when key things are coming up, in hopes that we can kind of set some agreements around how soon we each return each other's calls and emails and all of that. And I think that's something that we can refine going forward and have some good agreements on, so that we make sure we're all communicating, especially when, you know, key things come up, to be able to talk about. We also talked about ways that hopefully council can receive information a little bit earlier, and so that way, we can just prepare more, especially when there's kind of bigger agenda items, and had the commitment to be able to, even if we don't necessarily get the packet publishing schedule adjusted yet, is to be able to get items sent out earlier, as soon as they're available to council, to be able to review, and then we'll keep working on that, council leadership and the mayor around that. We also discussed, I think, one of the big goals for the council out of our first retreat that we wanted to really follow up on, as like the next steps out of this retreat, was to be able to work together on, on work for engaging our community, engaging in conversation, and in being out and connecting with our public. Earlier today at committee, we had a great conversation, following up on that, with, with our communications manager, Derek Wing, and I think those are going to be some good next steps, but also want to follow up some more, just from the council leadership perspective, to make sure that the council has what it needs, and also, working with the mayor to make sure that, that we can kind of get information in advance, so that we can all show up and work together to engage our community. So, those were, those were a couple of my takeaways. I will pause for a second for others who were there, in case you have any additional reflections or I missed anything in terms of, you know, some pieces we wanted to follow up on from our first retreat. We also had a few items that we'll be bringing back to work on, such as discussions on clarifying our ombuds process and some other things like that, that we can just bring up in conversation. But just wanted to open up the space. Was there anything that I missed in that summary that others would want to add? Okay, great. So, just wanted to close, oh, Mayor Bernie? Yes, go ahead.
It's, it's a follow-up from one of the items. So, I, we have, we, my team has been talking about how to help give you the information sooner for meetings. And as you know, we've been trying to, at the very least for study sessions, especially when there's a very large item, to get that to you as soon as possible, so you have more than a few days to, to work through it. But we are working through a shift in how we get things out to you. More to come on that. It's still in the creative process of what we can do, but as soon as we have more details. But our, our goal would be to get agendas to you. Business agendas are less cumbersome, but it's those study sessions that can really be a big bog. So, we're trying to see if we can do more of a two-week schedule than a, like, business meeting and, or studies, business meeting and study session together, and then there'd be so two, two sets in a month, and see if we're working through it. So, no promises yet, but I heard you loud and clear that you need more time, so we're trying to see if we can kind of streamline some of our processes from a, from a reality standpoint. It probably wouldn't be, really start till the next year, because it just takes us a while to do this. But just wanted to, all to know that we heard you, and we're trying to work through it.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bernie. And in the spirit of what we were discussing, really appreciate you following up and us just figuring out how we can all show up even better together. Great. Well, the only other things that I wanted to highlight, one is, we have the State of the City coming up. I did not actually note the date. Do you have the date there? The May 29th, May 29th from 1:00 to 3:30, and that's going to be at the Redmond Senior and Community Center. So, want to encourage everyone to attend and our listening public to attend. It's going to be an exciting gathering at our new space to show off our wonderful new stage and everything, everything going on there. And it was so wonderful to cut the ribbon with all of you recently at that, that space, and I've already seen some videos of really amazing performances going on in there and people enjoying it and loving the space. So, very exciting. Also, wanted to note, I'm going to send out to all of you the upcoming business meeting agenda, but just to highlight a couple of things that will be on there. Some of the things we've seen in committee, the Redmond Central Connector Phase 3 construction grant, the items we saw today on the WWRP grant resolution, also, some other pieces around other grants that we've received, and, and then, and then also, the approval of the updated contract for, or the contract extension for Bullseye Creative, and a couple other, other pieces on there. So, just make sure to, to check those out as well. And then, we will be having a staff report on the Overlake East Master Plan Development, which is a quasi-judicial decision. So, just a reminder to council members that on that topic, we shouldn't be having any sort of other communications around that, since it's quasi-judicial, but you'll be able to come and ask your questions during that meeting. And then, we'll also be having a staff report on the Tourism Strategic Plan, which we heard about a little in committee, and we've received a couple of letters from the community weighing in on there, so please bring your questions. And then, just in terms of extended meetings, looking out a bit, just wanted to highlight that upcoming, we will have a special meeting next week with the, with a lodging tax advisory committee candidate. So, just to note, that's a 6:30 meeting. And then, later this, this month, we'll be looking at that, we'll be doing a study session on that, Overlake East Master Plan Development Agreement, as well as our procurement policies and our Public Works Department accreditation process. So, those will be a couple of items that are coming up on the May 28th study session. And, and just a reminder, because in committee today, we weren't able to touch on that procurement policies piece, if you have any comments or questions, please send those to Director Kelly Cochran in advance of that, that study session. So, I think those are all of my updates. Are there any other updates from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have any questions on that item. If there are materials, is that one of the items that didn't have a lot of materials in the packet for the committee meeting? If, if there are materials that could help inform questions leading up to that, maybe the staff could just pass them along coming up. Yeah. But that's not why I raised my hand. I'm so sorry.
Helpful feedback.
Since you left up there.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to circle back on the question around council benefits. So, last week, we did the legislation updates, so that COO files can recruit a new salary commission, and then council had been having a discussion around benefits, and we got a follow-up on... And we got a follow-up on how the process of that conversation will be coming back to us from Director Laird. I had a follow-up conversation with Director Laird over email, just to make sure that I, I had this opportunity right. But I just wanted to offer a frame for all of us here on the council, that the opportunity to talk about the benefits for council members is actually an opportunity to talk about some of the barriers to serving on this body. So we've had ideas around things like childcare stipends for use during council meetings, or even we have a neighboring jurisdiction who has created an additional stipend for low-income council members or other income burden council members, just to make sure that their city is getting, eliminating all the possible barriers to serving on their body. And I think I would just like to invite our council to continue to, we heard that it's been since the early 90s that the council benefits have last been reviewed in a pretty substantial way. And if we could do that through an equity lens, as we go through that process this time around, I think that's a good opportunity for us. So just wanted to report that I had that conversation with Director Laird over email. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other comments, questions from the council? I think this might be our shortest study session of the year. But with that, that brings us to the end of our agenda. And if there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned.